I would like to call the Albert Galloway Area School Board Special Meeting Board. Would everyone please rise? I just wanted to say that I'm sorry. I'm going to try to come right here. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear. I'm going to try to make sure that it's clear.
Mr. Cobank is present. Ms. Frank?
Here.
Ms. Rupa?
Here.
Mr. Mike Dunham?
Here.
Ms. Mosha?
Here.
Ms. Wainey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Bruski?
Here.
Mr. Paul Dunn?
Here.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for a public forum this evening? And moving on, secretarial, enter into executive session if needed.
Madam President, there is indeed you entering into executive session. Personnel?
Here. Collect your book. Collect your book. I'm going to get motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Undersecretarial, adopt agenda as presented.
Second. Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve this in the following meeting held on May 15, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondents?
Yes, I would like to take a moment to feel your mention graduation was held last Friday. And thank goodness the weather cooperated. We had a beautiful ceremony. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, and all of the hands that had helped in getting that arranged and going off the bottom edge. You know, so thank you and good luck and congratulations to all of our graduates.
It was very beautiful and I don't think anybody, anything could have been done any better. I would personally like to thank everybody that was involved with having it to be such a beautiful night. And may I add, the football field looked beautiful too, if we weren't able to hold our graduation ceremony outside. Solicitorary report?
No report, Madam President.
Curriculum instruction, approve second and waive the third reading of updated policy two-two-one, dressing room.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
It's eight-one, motion carries. Approve second and waive the third reading of updated policy two-two-two tobacco, nicotine, and vaping use.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, extend William Cheslow's leave of absence from June 10, 2019 to approximately June 3, 2019.
Second. Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accept the retirement of Lori Cortick, elementary instructor effective June 4, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I should take a moment to thank Ms. Cortick for her years of dedicated service to Albert Galloway Area School District and our students at Breckshill Elementary. So thank you, Mrs. Cortick. Hope you have a very lengthy, healthy retirement.
Accept the resignation of Michelle Burnmore, coach, effective May 27, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accept the resignation of Brayley Ullie, cafeteria, effective June 3, 2019.
Second.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant Jennifer Packeroni a leave of absence from August 22, 2019 to approximately October 7, 2019. Accruency and personal days shall be used during leave as permitted by the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Award Allison DiMarco, the high school extracurricular activity newspaper sponsor for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Award Melissa Jefferies, the middle school extracurricular activity yearbook sponsor for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say, motion carries. Grant permission to eliminate the district subcolored position.
Second. Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rescind the motion of May 15, 2018 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between Albert Galloway Area School District and Albert Galloway Education Association.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to hire the following middle school coaches for the 2019-2020 season pending receipt of all public documents. Stephanie Smircheck, assistant soccer. Robert Swoke, girls basketball. Brianna Otto, assistant girls basketball.
Second. Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Award Anita Olisch, 2.5-hour cafeteria position in George A. Flava according to contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Award Tom Trusick, afternursing custodian position at AG High School according to contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accept the retirement of Edwin Bajaj, custodian, effective August 23, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also take a moment to thank Mr. Bajaj for his years of service as a custodian in the Albert Galloway Area School District. I wish Mr. Bajaj a long, healthy, happy retirement.
Administrator, reduce the AG North Elementary Cafeteria gym to AG Middle School Football boothers on October 25, 2019 from 4:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a school dance. Contact person, Sabrina Dyson.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of Masontown Elementary School cafeteria to Boy Scouts of America on September 12, 2019 from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for science.
Second.
Second? On second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The contact person there will be Christine. Grant use of AG North Football Field to AG Youth Football from June 10, 2019 to July 22, 2019 from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for running and conditioning. Contact person?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question on that. We do it. We do that resealing over there. Whenever we have the sealing completed, they won't be able to use the seal code process.
So was there any not there? That emotion carries?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Would you make sure that the AG Youth Football Organization knows that whenever Albert Galloway North is being sealed coded, there's also going to be some construction was prepared to displace? That during that process, they will not be able to hold practice in north?
Yes, sir.
Okay, however, you know, whenever we have a date, I'll make sure I communicate that to you and let them know that those are the dates that they are not permitted to be on the property. Thank you.
Grant use of AG North Football Field to AG Youth Football from July 23, 2019 to November 1, 2019 from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for conditioning and games.
Second.
Contact person again.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries, eight-one. Grant use of AG High School Wrestling Room to AG Youth Wrestling from July 13, 2019 to July 14, 2019 from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for wrestling clinic. The contact person being Jeff Fielder.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to financial. We have a presentation from our control room, Mr. Rupes.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, even though I'm making this presentation, I had quite a bit of help from your controllers. She's been very, very helpful. A lot of help also from our solicitor, Lee. And I mean, I also have a very hands-on superintendent who's been very involved in this process. I mean, I will admit that my time here at Albert Galloway, I did work for three very, very good superintendents, Dr. Mark and Dr. Dan and Dr. Tippett. They were decommanded. They ran a very good school district. Okay, well, first, you know, just take a little introduction. I want to thank you for adopting the budget, the proposed budget. And I'm sure you've all read this. Basically, it's the only limitation placed on the school board is to adopt a balanced budget and not exceed your funds. It's the fiduciary responsibility that I'm sure one of you take very seriously because I don't think I've ever seen anyone miss a meeting in my short time here. And so I congratulate you for that. I just hope that we were able to get a balanced budget without going into a fund balance. Because the fiduciary, it's a Latin term for faith and trust, and that's what obviously you are. You are the faith and the trust of the Albert Galloway School District. So with that, work members are the fiduciaries. And even though the budget is an annual estimate, it is the roadmap for the fiscal year, those values, places, priorities are influenced by the budget. So now we can get into some of the numbers. And you're being given a lot of numbers very quickly here. And if you have, if you see things that you don't think are right, please ask. I do when I make mistakes. There's a lot of numbers here that we're going over. Obviously, our enrollment has gone down. It has decreased from 37, 85, 0809 to 33, 13, and 18, 19. This is about a 14.3% decrease. And all but two years out of the last 10, we had a decrease. A total decline in enrollment has been about 472 students over the last 10 years. But that's pretty common for our area.
You look at the, you know, 472 students, that's more than what we have in each one of our middle schools. So in 10 years, we lost about kids that, you know, go to middle school. And you go all the way back, if you remember back to 1987, there was an additional 1,800 kids that we lost. If we put those numbers back all the way from 1987, you have 1,800 another plus, you have 400. You're looking at half of the district we lost in 30 some years.
Okay, I'll do a special education. Our expenditures have increased from basically 4.9 million to 7.7 million in the last 10 years by $2.8 million, which is a 57.2% increase. Unfortunately, subsidy during that time has only increased by $187,000. So this is expense that we are basically absorbing. I remember when I first started in schools, it was called the accessible funding formula for special ed. You're basically funded by the state for that. Those days are obviously gone. My line of commentary here is a fair funding formula. The proper accounts for the added costs required to educate our special ed students would drive more money out the district's pipelines, which would help us employ financial hardships that we're looking at right now. Pennsylvania, basically, does not use an education funding formula distributed state education dollars accurately and fairly. Over 20% of our student population receives special education services. There's the graph that shows the increase.
The bottom line there is, you can see, that's pretty much a flat line. That's what the state, you know, subsidizes our district. And you can see that our costs continue to go up, over 20%, as Andy said. And you can see that gap in special ed funding alone is significant. So that certainly doesn't help our situation when our cost is funded from the state.
Next is tuition expenditures. These have also increased by 1.6 million, over 72.5% over 10 years. The largest two components have been the Fayette County CTI and cyber charges. The Fayette County CTI tuition costs have increased almost $1 million over 10 years. It's a 137% increase. When I was here, I mean, we tried to get the funding formula changed at the CTI. Because basically, they charge you by student. Well, that, to me, that is assuming that all costs are variable per student. But you have fixed costs there, which I think should be divided by four. Administrative salaries, the building. They do, the rental subsidy, they do that by the four districts market value. But other than that, they're assuming all costs are variable. It may be a very far out example, but if for some reason, some district were to say, no kids, no children, students, and their costs. So the school just sits there and waits. That one, I think, but they, the Articles of Agreement, their trust agreement basically says, it says it's by AGM. And it would take all four schools to agree to change that. I fought that battle for 10 years when I was here and lost it. You're probably going to lose it again, so, because no one wants to pay more. But I think you've got fixed and variable variables. Okay, also then charter schools. Charter schools are basically publicly funded private schools. Some reasons for not using public money to fund these schools, from maybe education institution or response, bringing from regular, they have regulations and oversight, you probably go. Has resulted in some patterns of waste and fraud. They bleed money from the public school system, which results in a rather lesser education for public school students or an extra burden on the taxpayers. Eliminating democracy from school governance and parents' bill that this lack of voice in disadvantaged communities. And there are loose laws around conflict of interest combined with lack of transparency regarding spending and provided for rounds for profiteers. I mean, the district's cost has nothing to do with the actual cost of the charter school. The result is an uncontrollable cost imposed on the home district. This is a state mandate over which school districts have no cost control.
And this is one area where it would be proposed language for cyber charter tuition, where school districts have a comparable cyber program, grades K through 12, that, you know, if that was become law, if parents still judge their children to go to a soccer school other than the districts, they would have to pay tuition, just like students who go to private school, their parents pay the tuition for that. So can't stress enough, I mean, we've talked to legislators, we've talked to senators, we've talked to our representatives, for everybody to make calls, to our representatives, pushing that to help Michael Donald Galloway express that, that all districts, if that will become law, it would significantly help our situation out with tuition expansion.
Okay, let me get into our market value versus assessed.
Can I ask a question about the cyber school? Can I ask a question? What's the district pay out in the year to like cyber third schools and cyber charter schools? I can't read for this part. I have to talk to everybody.
Let me find that page. I would say 1718, this is 1.1 million.
1.2, it goes around 1.2, I do remember that.
Right here. Cyber charter in 2007, eight was 708,000. It went up and down, but 2017, 18, we were 1.1 million plus.
Thank you. 1.139, yeah. Okay, market value versus assessed. While the market value has grown over 76% in our district in the last decade, assessed value has only increased by 17%. Unfortunately, it's the assessed value that determines our tax base for real estate taxes. So only a county-wide reassessment can rectify this imbalance. The last reassessment was in 2001, our base year for assessed valuation. If I do remember right, when they did assess, it was revenue neutral, so even though your value and other taxes went down, it was not, couldn't, your revenue stayed the same. The state uses a common ratio level that compares actual sales prices to stated county assessments across Pennsylvania. The State Tax Equalization Board has determined that as of July 1, 2018, Fayette County's common level ratio is 1.40. So basically, what this means is that the county's stated assessment of 100% of market value is really only 71% of market value. Okay, A ratios, this is, it's kind of a, we've got basically the three, the market value, personal income, market value, and the personal income. A ratio is the general term for the following three values. Various state subsidies use these ratios in their calculations, and that's how most subsidies are calculated. Smaller the A ratio, the wealthier our district. Our ratio remains one of the higher ones in the state. The market value, personal income A ratio is the Commonwealth method of determining the combined market value and income wealth for each pupil. Basically, it represents the relative wealth of market value and income in relation to the state average for each pupil in the school district. The MP market value A ratio is the sales value of taxable real estate certified by the State Tax Equalization Board. Their numbers are a little behind, but in 2016, market value was used in the calculation of the market value A ratio payable for the 18th, 19th fiscal year. Personal income A ratio reflects personal income for residents of our school district excluding out-of-state income as reported on the PA 40 income tax return, REIT. That is certified to Pennsylvania Department of Ed, by the Department of Revenue. So as a summary, the market value, personal income, market value A ratios have decreased slightly, indicating some increase in wealth. But due to our 2001 basis assessment year, only our state ratios have increased. So a lot of our assessed valuation determines what our real estate taxes actually generate in income. Personal income has remained, there's, try to, personal income has remained fairly constant, which actually indicates a decrease in wealth due to inflation over 10 years. Okay. Now we get into the expenditures of the budget. Salaries, 38%. Benefits, 28%. And then, the next biggest, of course, is your other purchase services, at 13%. There's, the numbers are there. There's the chart, basically showing how much salaries and benefits do take up. And then the second chart, keep going, Chris, is your expenditures by function. Your 1,000 total instructions, almost 33 million, or 59.1%. Your 2,000 support services, 17.7 million, 31.7%. Non-instructional, just student activities, community services, about 1.8%, almost a million. And then your other expenditures, your 5,000 is all your debt service and fund transfers, which is basically your activities, fund transfers. There's some charts and the numbers there behind it. Fringe benefits, obviously, medical and prescription drug, 28% and 8%. But the big one, obviously, is retirement. Stating basically 47% of your fringes are retirement. And then we'll go into that in a little deeper detail, chart in the graph there on it. Appreciate it. You get to retirement and, yeah, keep going. Very good. This one has been basically kicked the ball down the road, and it's finally arrived here. The district will spend approximately 34.3 cents per dollar for its $1 salary for retirement cost in 1919. The district has no control over contributions to the state retirement system. Retirement contribution to the state pension fund for school employees is established by Peters, the state retirement system. Retirement costs obviously benefit the employee and form a future income. Cost increase to the district is based on state law, which stipulates how the district contribution is calculated. Pension costs have risen from 4.76 a payroll in 80809 to 33.43, and the current rate are over 600%. The 2019-20 rate is 34.29, with a rate of 36.3 projected for 2324. But this retirement cost will win spending without any salary increase, although we are reimbursed by the state for this, but the gap grows. Next one is debt service. Basically, your bond issues. It will slightly decline over the next eight years, but unfortunately, reimbursement will also decline, causing our net expense to actually increase 9% for debt service. Even though debt service will be coming to an end here in five, six years, please be advised that when debt service ends in 2627, the end of bond issues usually indicates it's time for renovation to school. That's why they gave you that. Unfortunately, the plan bond system right now has been eliminated from the state. What that means is districts like ours will be almost impossible to go into major renovations and construction without reimbursement. I remember when I was here, the architect told us that Masontown Elementary School was the first new school built in Fayette County in 50 years. I don't know, but that's what we were told. And I think if you start looking back, it might be there. Although, when we did meet with state representatives, they were talking about bringing plan bond back. But the problem that happened the last few years with plan bond is districts were putting a queuing system where they could go three or four years without a plan bond reimbursement payment on revenue, yet they were paying a pretty hellacious debt service payments. And I feel good for one of the school districts who got crushed by that, so.
Andy, this is, our debt service system, we, we... Andy, this is, our debt service system, we, we, we wanted the high school, we did all of our elementary.
Right.
We did two middle schools, and we built two new elementary.
Right, I, I think our buildings are in good shape.
I mean, I think, you know, we should commend it, that it's all taken care of, and it's going to be, you know, that it is the, the core thing, however, you are right, when it comes to man, our building, that's why it's so important that we maintain what buildings we have, we take care of them, because who knows when we're going to be able to do anything else.
Right, I mean, I think you remember what was in ninety, side left, for three months came back, and obviously one of the richest school districts in the state, and your buildings were in better, better condition and better shape than terrorists, so.
We have to make things happen.
Right. Free reduced lunch, basically why I included this was, there's a lot of questions about tariffs, and if we get into these tariffs on food, food supplies, it could drive, it could drive our free reduced lunch program or our cafeteria fund up. Half of that fund is, obviously, food purchases, so that's, that was one of the reasons I wanted to include this, was, that is, it's a gray area, and we have a bunch of money in there, but where are these tariffs going to end, and how it goes, no one really knows, so. That was just basically it. Now we get to the revenues. We have the chart there showing our revenues from the state, federal and local. While Pennsylvania recently passed the statewide funding formula to more equitably distribute funds across school districts, the current budget will prevent schools from making important long-term investments to improve student performance and address structural inequalities. Smaller class sizes, more robust early education, childhood education, teacher development, arts programming, and after-school activities in schools are all correlated to better student achievement and student outcomes. However, Pennsylvania does not currently use an education funding formula that distributes education dollars accurately and fairly. Only the new money is distributed on a student-weighted funding formula, which in this eighteen nineteen fiscal year amounted to only six percent of our total basic education fund, or one point four hundred, one point four hundred sixty-eight thousand of our twenty-three million eight ninety-two basic education funding subsidy. So, you know, we thank you, we thank you, Pennsylvania Department of Education for the money, but if, if, if the funding formula was driven by our student population, it would be considerably different, but basically all they were doing was adding percentage on percentage from year for year. State revenues continue to comprise the majority of revenue source for our district, at seventy-one and a half percent, local twenty-five, and federal three point five. Our largest revenue component, state revenue, has not been a predictable source of funds, with the amounts varying significantly through the years. It took seven years for the district to catch up to oh eight oh nine funding levels. Federal revenues are currently at a ten-year low of one point eight million. I remember when I was here in the nineties, we went through some eight, we went through five amazing years, where we had a whole number where we had zero, and we had, then in three years' time, I'll put progression over there, it's one point two, one point eight, one point five, and we're back to zero. It's, it's kind of hard to do long-range planning with numbers like that, when you just don't know what you're getting. The current proportion of compensation to total personal income is the source of both property tax and earned income taxes, not conducive to property tax increases for general revenue purposes. Both combined for less than nineteen percent of total revenues and are constrained by actions of state legislature under Act One limitations and the statutory cap on the rate of earned income tax. These tax limits affect, affect your district's ability to pay higher expenses by increasing revenue from property, which accounts for approximately only fifteen percent of total revenues. Money matters in education, and children attending well-resourced schools perform better on achievement tests. However, Pennsylvania's current education budget still falls far short of what we need to adequately fund our schools. It's my view. Now we get to the millage rates. And, okay, basically, we're talking by, at the time you're talking millage rates, you're affecting someone's income, but conversely, when we refer to people, you're also affecting someone's income, so it's, it's definitely a double-edged sword. The district receives the majority of its local revenue from the real estate taxes, raising them three times in ten years. Currently, four of Fayette County's six school districts have a higher millage rate than our district. Looking at a ten-year summary of millage rates, we collected one hundred and thirty mills as opposed to the countywide average of one hundred and forty-nine mills. So this value of nineteen point two mills, that our current collection rate is, is over ten million dollars, ten nine six seven six, so basically lost revenue or opportunity loss. Remember, this is just to maintain the average millage rate for the Fayette County schools. Since we have an adjusted Act One index, we are relatively poorer than other districts in the state. Our market value personal income A ratio is zero point seven three five. As such, since our A ratio is greater than zero point four, we get the privilege of raising and adjusting our index upwards for greater taxation. Yeah, I was in an IDU for most of my career, this one, this one I just had a hard time understanding, and I hope I'm right on this, but. So the law reads, for school districts with a market value personal income A ratio larger than zero point four, the value of their index is adjusted upward by multiplying the base index by the sum of zero point seven five of their market value personal income A ratio. So for example, the base index for nineteen twenty is three point four percent, and our districts' market value personal income A ratio is seven three five three. So basically what this amounts to is our adjusted index is five point oh five. Now, five point oh five percent if we can raise taxes, I think it doesn't seem like that much compared to three point four percent, but when you take the bottom line, we can tax over forty-eight and a half percent greater than history, with the market value personal income A ratio less than zero point four. So it's almost like the poorer you are, the more you can tax. That's thought almost escalated. Base index is calculated by averaging the percent increases in Pennsylvania statewide average weekly wage, federal funding cost index for elementary, secondary schools. That's what makes your job difficult, because I've always said we have the most angustious job I've ever seen. Now we get to the form where we had before, and, but we made the adjustments, and obviously you'll, we'll need to make more adjustments, so this is where we are now. If we look at the nineteen twenty proposed final budget revenues. If we don't raise taxes, we're looking at about fifty-three million three four zero. We go to the index, fifty-three million six, and if we go above the index to the max, fifty-three million eight. We do have to, some furloughs, and so we've got to decrease the revenues we would receive in that, from that three, the revenues, social security, things of that nature, so. Our adjusted revenues would be fifty-two nine nine eight without tax increases, fifty-three two, or fifty-three five with the two tax increases. Anybody have any questions following that? Any expenditures, then, obviously those lines all three states saying fifty-five eight one nine. Intents of furlough, those all staying, the expenses will stay at the same, it's five hundred and ninety-six thousand. Then from our retirement, the net, the net decrease between the replacement educator and retiring educators, one hundred and eighty thousand. Our health consortium savings, please, that's why I put it in red there, it's a one-year only savings, is one million two hundred thousand. The buy-in to issue for a new health consortium is three hundred and eighty thousand, that's a three-year buy-in, and as of now, that's what they're talking, it's going to be a three-year buy-in. Unfortunately, we still have a buyout from the early, the early year one health consortium. That number, as of right now, is five hundred and thirty-four thousand, but that number can change, because we won't know that until their final audit, and last year their audit wasn't completed until late November. So that brings us down to our proposed expenditures of fifty-four million seven hundred and fifty-eight. So the decrease of the fund balance just goes right along there, too, they're going to be a million seven, a million four, a million two, depending upon militaries. But obviously, Chris, I, administration, along with your direction, have more cuts to make, because that would leave us with a estimated fund balance of anywhere between nine hundred and sixty-three thousand and one million four. And that, to me, is, is a recipe for disaster, so it's. Summary of conditions, just, I'm sure you've read them, you know, I'm not going to sit here with the labor doers, with, with no reductions in labor programs or other expenses, and no tax increases, the fund balance would be drastically depleted, it'd be right along. And then next year's budget would be looking for quite a bit of money, probably at least two and a half million. I did include a five-page review of Act One Forty-One, because I'm sure everybody's reading about Woodland Hills, Penn Hills, drastic furloughs, kind of being, being there. We're not allowed, I, it's, there's, school districts are in trouble. With higher costs, the limited dollars, we must cut costs to balance the budget each year, or again, we reduce costs by A, eliminating certain programs, forces, and reducing other costs, and B, reducing the number of teachers, administrators, aides, custodians, and secretaries. Now, the recommendations I have made is we'll create anxiety in the community and among our staff, my major effort is to see that we will, we not only maintain an outstanding school system, but that we continue to improve where necessary. I am convinced that in order to do so, we must shrink our facilities and ultimately our staff, if we were to provide a full range of funding programs and services. I'm also convinced that we must have an intellectual, long-range plan to accomplish this, if we were to avoid the annual attempts to nickel-and-die our allocations and programs by annual budget cuts. Thing that, reading Act One Forty-One, which by no means, by no means we're not there, is that if a chief recovery officer is appointed by the Secretary of Education, aside from serving at the pleasure of the secretary, Act Forty-One, One Forty-One does not specify any oversight or accountability for the chief recovery officer. Rather than restore some of the severe education funding cuts from the past, Act One Forty-One only allows the school districts in financial recovery status to request financing. Act One Forty-One does not provide for direct financial aid to financially troubled school districts. If the school board fails to maintain the objectives, the objectives of the recovery plan established by the CRO, the Secretary of Education will petition the court in commonplace for the appointment of a receiver. Receiver is appointed by the secretary and approved by the court. Assuming all the powers and duties of the CRO and the school board, the receiver has even more power than the CRO. So my comment is local school districts are destined to either run by themselves, or have someone run them appointed by the agency, causing them a problem. Thank you, I know we can get this done anywhere. Questions, Chris?
Thank you, we obviously, like you said, we have decisions, because we're back in the key.
As we, as we had talked a while back, and went all the way to this time last year, one of the problems we have is, you know, you don't have plan bonds, you have, we talked about right size of our district, you can't do that, and take on new construction and renovations, it's still hard to do that, you're looking at forty million, a million dollars in investment, or if they do come back with reimbursement, and it's going to be three or four years before you see any of your money back, it, it doesn't work, you know, so fortunately, you know, as Andy had referred to, with Penn Hills, Woodland Hills, Woodland Hills, I think there's recently furloughed seventeen teachers, you know, or not at that point, but I do think, in order to kick this into next year, where your gap could get larger and larger, we do seriously need to look at making cuts, making furloughs, and looking at raising taxes to where we're allowed. I know that's all bad news and taboo, and nobody wants to do it, and, but unfortunately, we're, the situation with our finances and most of these things are things that we cannot control. It's astronomical that retirement in ten years went from four percent to thirty-four, thirty-five percent. Cyber charter tuition, the tuition at VOTEC went up a million in ten years, so those, those are things that we can't control. I think we have a great school history, and I think there are a lot of good things that happen here, we get a lot of compliments from our parents and students about the education they receive. Unfortunately, we're in a situation that we don't have much control over, and basically we can't control or try to make some cuts that don't have a drastic effect on the education of our youth, and doing the best that we can with what we have. I know we've had a lot of discussion in regards to furloughs and things that we can do, we booked it administrative, professional, to support staff, and everybody on down the line, you know, and I'm working on a plan for down the road, in a few months, I'm trying to gather information and numbers, if we might be able to do something down the road, that's going to be, you know, be for cuts and having to raise taxes, unfortunately, probably multiple years in a row, like other districts have done, in our county and throughout the Commonwealth. So with that being said, I know we have very tough decisions to make in the next few weeks to try to get a final budget adopted by the end of June. Yeah, I've lost a lot of sleep, these are difficult, I'm sure it's the same for each one of you sitting at this table with me, you know, but anyhow, thank you, Andy, for, you know, Denise and everybody else who had authority in developing the presentation.
Finish and join after the break.
Break it off, Andy, and thank you again.
I have one question, following our presentation. In the spirit of our fiduciary responsibility, you mentioned one three hundred in expenditures, showing our administrative costs are three point nine million dollars. Do you think for our next financial meeting, you could prepare us with that number with our other local districts, Fayette County, and the number of principals they have in their buildings?
Perfect.
Anything from anyone else?
Yes, I, I know that the Fayette administration and Andy and Denise before that have really, really tried to come up with some creative solutions where we can, where we can save some money. I mean, in an ideal world, we would be looking at ways to improve our education, and, and in an ideal world, we have all the money to spend on the top-notch technology and classrooms and bringing teachers in, bringing curriculum in. I know that's not a luxury that we have, as a poor district, but I have always been an advocate, and I think the more people that can come to the table to brainstorm in the effort of moving forward, the better. Is there any way that we could set up some kind of an honest way that teachers or parents could have some input on ways that they think that we could be saving some money on their budget? Again, just for brainstorming, I think that the teachers in particular are in the trenches, they may know where there might be some positions where that particular position isn't, I don't want to say they're not, that it's not serving its purpose, but maybe if there are, if they can wait, or if they have an idea of a position that's more of a plus position than something that contributes directly to education, I for one would like to have that input. I don't know if there's a way to do that.
Oh, I have a suggestion, maybe a suggestion, lots, in the teacher lounge, it's lots.
We could in our next meeting, if that would happen, we are having another financial meeting before our regular board meeting.
We have a website.
If we would do that, then... If we would do that, then all of those ideas, whatever, whatever's given to us, they could surely be done.
Could we, could we, to set it up on our website?
And you know that, that they email us suggestions?
And I'm just concerned, I think that if it's not, if, I can understand that somebody's lucky to get up and cover four or just send an email from their personal email account or work email account where they're going to get up by sending that, so.
Well, I mean, we could do the box if that's how the vermin's all that. You can call it, as, well, I mean, I think school is no exception, I don't know.
Well, maybe, I don't know, if there was a way, if, if the teachers had, whether it's a union head or some other head, that they can forward, gather the information forward to us if the teachers have any suggestions.
Yeah, we, I personally would more than all of that at the, because as I said, we are having another financial meeting before our regular board meeting at the end of the month to see, you know, if we can get it done.
And this is Riley, our union president, and I have a very good rapport. We, and we discuss situations, you know, that may, so Mrs. Riley and I can continue to talk and see if our membership brings any ideas. And then that way, their input to their union rep, their union president is confidential and we wouldn't discuss names.
This problem is not going to go away. You don't have the next year, the next year. The state has to do something and we all agree that property tax does not work. We need a state income tax increase and taxing all goods could help if the people in Harrisburg do that money for education and don't find other ways to spend it. It could help. This problem's not going to go away.
Yeah, I mean, I was speaking with Mr. Kolbeck and I don't know if Mr. Aubrey, but as far as the retirement, the increase, Andy, you were warned about that ten years ago. We knew it was going to catch up with us. There was nothing we could do.
It was literally kicking at the door.
We knew it was going to catch up with us. And as Mr. Kolbeck says, it's not worn away. Our legislators in Harrisburg need to come up with something to help all schools.
As Mr. Kolbeck has said too, we're not asking the state to do away with property tax before sales tax, because we know that can get a little bearish in the type. We're just asking possibly to increase that so that they can increase school funding.
I made a suggestion to our representatives, do the six percent sales tax across the board and keep the school tax for one year. I'm trying, but the days, the people in Harrisburg and Philadelphia don't want to raise the taxes because there's no taxes in Delaware. There's no, uh, sales tax in Delaware. And that's where most of our representatives come, from Harrisburg and east.
And when you think about it, the districts that aren't struggling like that, like us, like we are, which there are more than just us, there are several, but the ones that are doing okay are saying, why do we need to change it? They don't want to change it because they're doing okay.
That's why they were happy.
They don't want to change.
That's why they were happy with the funding for them because they just got a percent, all percent.
That's exactly right.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anything else? Mr. Peg, do you want to announce one more thing on the financial, what we're talking about?
Yeah, we, we are, we are a couple of things. One is we're going to be holding a, another financial budget meeting to review items again, which will be held on June seventeenth. Monday, June seventeenth at six o'clock here at DeBert's Swainy. The regular school board meeting and work session, they are being moved to the last week in June. The work session will be June twenty-fifth. That's on a Tuesday because the Fayette County CTI's board meeting is on Monday the twenty-fourth. So we will hold our regular work session on the twenty-fifth and the regular meeting will be the twenty-sixth. Once we know the dates of the eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and the twenty-sixth of June.
Seventeenth.
I'm sorry, seventeenth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of June with all meetings held here at DeBert's Swainy, the cafeteria, starting at six o'clock PM.
Now, there is a need to go back to executive session.
Yes, we will, there is a need to go back into executive session. The regular meeting is adjourned. We will be going back into executive session for personnel reasons.
Okay, the next word from me. Wow, other than what you just said about the budget meeting. We're going on June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, DeBert's for the school cafeteria. I don't even know she's to a judge.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Next to you all on seventeen.
Thank you all for your attendance.